Okay, alright, I am gonna call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order at seven o'clock. Oh, John.
Yep. President Franklin?
Here.
Commissioner Colbert? Commissioner Duckett?
Here.
Commissioner Hansett?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lot?
Here.
Town Administrator Carl Snyder?
Here.
Police Chief David Burce?
Here.
Public Works Director Don Albond?
Here.
Town Clerk John Hudson here.
We'll rise for the question. Alright, we will review the agenda. John, can you take us through it?
Will do. One, call to order. Two, roll call. Three, pledge allegiance. Four, review of agenda. Old business, A, Better City for discussion. B, STWG for discussion. C, Police Department Office Space for discussion. D, Vision Plan for discussion. E, Ethics for discussion. Under new business, A, Elections for discussion. B, Events recap and calendar for discussion. C, Budget Calendar for discussion. D, Conference Room Agreement for discussion. E, HVAC update for discussions. Five, Administrative Update. Six, Preliminary Approval of Next Agenda. And seven, Adjournment.
Are there any additions or changes? That anyone has? Alright, we'll get right into business, John. We will start with, with Better City and Administrator. Administrator Snyder, take it away.
Sure. So we've been talking to a couple of different branding companies over the past couple of months. I think I sent the board some different examples. And so one thing that came up in discussing Better City is they do do branding as well. And in your packet there is an overview of what they do. It's kind of a solid card pricing, so we don't have to do everything. We can add and do stuff. Just from an administrative viewpoint view. And I don't think it's, we're looking to do a full, full rebranding, or are we, or kind of a nicer community? I know at least for administrative, it'd be nice if we could have a set of colors, fonts, and stuff that we do for the publications.
Kyle, you're cutting out.
Can you hear me a bit better?
Yep.
Been closer to the thing. Right now, we kind of have a, we use a different types of fonts and stuff like that. So that would be nice. I don't think we have to go super in depth on some of these items. Of course, it's just everything they offer. But pick and choose stuff like a logo or brand guide, or maybe letterhead and envelope, just some of those basic things, just so we have a standard font and color scheme across all publications and documents. And John and I were talking today, we're looking to go into our five-year website revamp with Revise. Our new website's five years old, and part of the contract is they get a, get the makeover. Five years, every five years they recommend to me. Then they can go hand and handle this as well, so everything matches across the board. Social media, website, business cards. So I just want to put that out there. I don't know if Commissioners have any thoughts, or if I missed anything.
I was just gonna say, kind of the benefit of using Better City to do this is they're already out talking to residents, getting that feedback on, to be able to identify what the brand is without having to have residents be like, now, who is this other team? It's one team. Anyone else have, have thoughts, comments?
I just have a comment. Have we received any reports from Better City to see how, how they're coming along with, you know, going around and getting, you know, getting rebranding ideas for the town from the, from the residents?
So right now, they're just doing the economic development piece, but they're gathering data, I think, for the rebranding if we approve the amendment. But you can talk about the conversations.
Oh yeah, so we have bi-weekly meetings with them. So they're, right now, they're getting, they're still in interview mode for a lot of stuff. So they've talked to a lot of different agencies. We're trying to get our hands on a bunch of different plans. Right now, we're trying to get the plans for the Showplace Arena redevelopment, that Revenue Authority's holding on to. So they're just kind of compiling all the information. They're also looking at some of the trail data, and possible some funding trails and connectivity.
They're math, they're doing a map for us that has like trails that are already planned, and then a few little connections and, so that we can bring it to the state, because there's actually extra money. More money than you want them all, for sure.
I guess my next question would be, so what if the residents don't agree with the branding? So what do we do?
So, it's the resident-guided branding, so.
It'd be the votes, popular vote.
It's gonna be the sense they get from.
I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just saying, what if they really don't want it? So how do we, and we've already spent all this money? You know what I mean? So, I, I think that, for me, I would have looked at more so the opinions first of the residents before I started spending so much money.
So, so two things, the economic development firm is kind of separate. So that, that's the contract for economic development. Then, the branding, when we talk about rebranding this summer, we receive at least a dozen comments from various, from residents saying, I like the tobacco leaf, and residents saying, we need to get rid of the tobacco.
I remember that, I remember that.
That identifies that there is something we need to talk about, so that's.
Okay.
They do that. And I think they create a survey, so like, when we send the link out to residents, it's like, what font do you like, the color schemes? I'm, I'm not sure.
That may be a little, that may be. That may not be fun, that part may not.
So we just had the initial discussion with them as well, and then whatever the board kind of wants to see, like, I think, just looking at the dollar card pricing, a couple of things the board would like to see. We can also get some quotes from some of the other companies that we've been conversations with, just so it's competitive as well.
I mean, I think this is pretty comparable to the.
It is, from what I've seen, but we can do line by line.
But like you said, if you guys are revamping, it may be, we just tied it, and it may save us money that way.
And this, they already have the conversations, and they've already have a sense of kind of brand, what res, from their conversations with residents, they're kind of able to develop that sense. So probably, I want to say, when they presented, they said they would come up with like, an initial set of designs, and we would say like, they wouldn't necessarily be the final design. We'd be like, we like these ones, but they're not quite, and then.
Then the ones that we like, we put them out there and let the residents have their say?
Okay, that sounds, that sounds fun.
It's all about popular vote, huh? Yeah.
Yeah.
And the town just pushes out.
Yeah. Commissioners, online, oh.
Yeah, I just, this is Commissioner Colbert, sorry. Sorry, I joined a little bit late. I just had a question, and looking at this kind of menu that comes along with this rebranding for Better City. For the items that are not optional, are they all kind of an all or nothing deal? Can we kind of fund them on a line item level? And if we determine, once we get past the logo design phase, kind of to Commissioner Lot's point, if they're developing logos, we get a couple of options, we throw them out there to the community, the community says, hey, we actually like what we already have, then sure, we're, we're down 2,500 as opposed to 10,000 plus. Are we, is it, would this contract be structured in a way where we could kind of cut that off, as opposed to just giving them the whole lot of money upfront?
So it can be the same, it would just kind of be paid kind of the same way the economic development contract is, kind of over, spread out over time. But the first two pieces are like the key pieces to developing the brand. It's the, the guide, which has like, that's where you get the, the font, the color, that kind, those kinds of things are in there. So, those are kind of the big things. And then, yeah, if we don't want a Google slide deck, or a press re, you know, we, we can take these things off. Obviously, a letterhead and envelope could be funded through office supplies.
Can we make the, can we make the color selection a little felt, instead of the color selection?
So it's all kind of part of brand idea, it's like the color part of.
So the, the board probably gets some recommendations on color, and they take it.
It's, it's like a weird color theory thing, like how I went, let John use red during budgets.
But as a board, this is Commissioner Duckett.
Well, yes, don't, but we should have the ability to, to select our own colors, and then they kind of use that to market, to use it as marketing, like, you know, most companies have their own set of brand coloring. And that is something that we could do, and then tell them, this is, or they give you a palette, and they, the colors that actually fit together, then we select that one that really works best for us. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and they'll, exactly, then they'll pick that palette based on the feed, the resident feedback.
I really wasn't saying the rep, based on the residents' feedback, but I was just saying that sometimes that could just be a decision that's just made, and these are the colors that, color selection, maybe the board selects maybe three color selections, palettes, and then we go with that as opposed to, like, you know, I don't know how they intend to do it, but that is probably what I would like to see.
I would say start with the residents.
I'm not saying that the residents don't get an opportunity to vote, but I'm saying that we start with color palettes that we've already selected, and then the residents can go from there to vote on the color palettes.
But don't you need a theme to start with color palette? You know what I mean?
Well, that is, that's Better City's job, to come up with all of that. I'm just saying if.
Yeah, that's true. You're right.
I'm just thinking, we, we can, we can select, like, this is what we think is bad, you know, what we would like you all to vote on, and they'll still have their say. They'll actually select it, no, with, you know, we just give them guidance.
But that could be five very different opinions.
Yeah, but, well, the thing is, that's what we do all day long, that's what we do.
Right, their job.
So I think, I think that's why it makes sense for Better City to kind of, they're gonna come, like, so the colors are kind of part of the idea of the, of what the town is, like, is.
I imagine they have a process.
Primary colors or pastels? Right, they have a process to, to do that, and that's, they're the professionals. So I think we should, and that doesn't mean they give us five things that we say, we don't like any of these. That's, you know, go back and bring us stuff that's more blue, or whatever it is, you know? But, and they know what our current colors are online, so they're gonna pull that all together and tie everything. So I think, I think it's okay to let them professionally advise us on what fits best with like, what the residents are saying, is the feel of the town. Because those colors are gonna be in the logo and providing the, the whole feel with the brand.
I get the professional opinion, but that doesn't mean that they can't provide us with samples, so that we can also.
Well, that's, that's what they do.
Thing. Yeah, so they do that, but we get a palette, so.
Yeah, I think we're all saying the same thing, so.
Okay.
So I guess the question is, do we feel like this item is something we can vote on to approve at the next meeting?
What, what are we doing from this, from this list?
It's a contract amendment.
Okay.
Not necessarily, what are, well.
It'd probably just be the logo design and the brand.
Brand guide, which is option for add-ons, as we guessed there. So, does everyone, anyone not feel ready to vote on this on the 24th? Okay, so we will move this to a vote for the 24th with just the first two options.
We'll get a detailed proposal from Better City with the exact pricing, and maybe some information on their process.
Yeah, because they kind of gave us that presentation at one of the early sessions while they were still gathering data. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the Sustainable Communities Work Group. Go ahead and.
So I'll open it up, but we had the meeting, Commissioner Duckett and Colbert and myself met with the STWG group about a couple of weeks ago, I think, pre-holidays, and we've had some really good conversations. I won't, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Colbert and Duckett to get some feedback. I think it sounds like we're good to move forward with some enabling legislation. There were some changes that the STWG team had that I think were manageable. That'll be, that would reflect in any enabling legislation bylaws. More so, so this memo is just an old memo we pulled out, but I kind of put a tense timeline on page two of discussion now. Introduced it at the February town meeting, just to give us a little time to pull that together. And I'll turn it over to the other two Commissioners.
Yeah, no. No, I'll just say, and Kyle and Commissioner Duckett, please keep me honest, I, I agree with Kyle's assessment. We had the meeting pre, pre-new year. They got some histories, some feedback, some understanding of the group, its purpose, you know, as it's, as it's seen, and I think that fed, excuse me, some of the changes that are reflected in the updated memo that Kyle put out there. I had originally said that I'd like to have this, you know, kind of on schedule for the, for the February meeting, but if we need a little bit more time, I think that's perfectly fine. Just to make sure, you know, we could have another conversation with the folks we met with pre, pre-holiday, to make sure that we're all still on, still on the same page with things.
I have nothing to add to that. Thank you, Commissioner Colbert.
Anyone else have any comment, questions, concerns? Alright, before we move on to the next item, is the paper rustling a problem for people on virtual? Okay, sorry, thank you. We will move on to Police Department Office Space, and we will turn that over to Chief.
Good evening, everybody. So the update, pretty much from the last time that we had our discussion, is that the space is still available. I've reached out to a commercial real estate agent who is looking over the paperwork that the landlord actually sent us. So he has not gotten back to me. Actually, we had an issue where my email to him went to his spam, so I guess he didn't initially see it. So once I made a phone call to him, he apologized, but he is supposed to get back to me, hopefully, before the end of this week. So, right now, I guess it's just up to the board to decide what we do or go from here, and I'll open it up for any questions.
I'm trying to unmute, sorry, guys. So, does anyone, has anyone, everyone gotten out to see the space? Any comments, concerns?
My comment, no, I have not seen the space, but my comment is that truly, I don't think that we're there yet to take on such a huge financial responsibility right now, and I would like to see us consider looking in town. I think that police presence should be in town, and that any police building that we operate in, and I know that, that it should have a presence here, not outside of town, not on 301. And I can see if we were, I just think that would make a difference in the residents' opinion of police, and I think that it would be just, actually, just a reasonable option, something that we could consider, like, jumping into sooner rather than later, but that would be, my thought was, checking into the Herbert Building. And saying, I see that there is some, some, some restorative work that is going on, they restarted. I think that's a good option to look into. I really don't think that, since the police drive their cars home already, so they're take-home cars, they don't really need additional parking that much. Thinking like, if we kept the chief, or the chief's office at the town, and then maybe several, found some space at the Herbert Building where we could have like officers in that building, like office, like a pole, police officer station area. And then I know there's a concern about all the weaponry and all those things, and if that's a concern, they could stay at the town hall where that space already is, that they're already using, and keep it under safeguard, and they come in to change out their weapon, whatever they need to do. I don't know what police do. But I'm saying, in, in the matter of just space itself, that I think is, is an option that we should consider, that we should talk to the owner of the whole Herbert Building to see if that's something that we can do. I feel like that would be more reasonably, reasonable economically than trying to push ourselves into a building that I don't think that we're ready for. In addition to that, we also still need space for facilities. So I just don't see where this is a, a great fit for the town right now. And I think that we should have police presence here in town. And we can be creative with that, and that, what I just gave is, is my suggestion of how we could start to think about being creative.
Okay, well, that's, that's good information, but the police presence is already in town. And part of the possible agreement with this building is that they would come into the town, so moving forward in your discussions about the Herbert Building, that's, that's another building to look at. However, the Herbert Building, my understanding, is set up for commercial and future development for the downtown area. The Police Department, as we move forward with the annexation projects and other things, there are things that go into a police building that are not currently in the building that we have. So, that's why there's a need at some point to move. So, things that are in the current building are stacked on top of each other. But what really needs to happen is these things need to be spaced out in secure areas. So I understand everything that you're saying, you know, it's not a problem with looking at the Herbert Building, but the Herbert Building and taking home cars is not one in the same, because as the department grows, you'll have administrative staff, and other staff, and visitors who will need to come to the building, and the parking over there is very limited. There is actually a particular futuristic holding cell that I don't believe the, the Herbert Building actually provides that type of space. But we can look at it, but I can just pretty much tell you, from my experience, the Herbert Building is more suited for a commercial and not.
Well.
Use department.
Right, and so you can also see a lot of these shopping centers that are suited for commercial. They have all types of of, of businesses within that commercial unit, and they have police depots, police stations within that. So I'm thinking, I know that you're, my thought is thinking about how quickly we're moving to do something like that, and where we are to actually do that. So, I'm saying still, that there's a component that we can think about keeping the, the, the town, like a, a space in the town for the chief, and then utilize that space in there for whatever that weaponry is, and whatever that looks like, and people still come to the town to do their business, if they need to pay tickets and so forth and whatever, and then have another area in the Herbert Building. I'm not saying that you're securing things in the Herbert Building, per se, but then maybe that particular individual is willing to say, hey, if you all want to like, create this building, or at least this area that you're renting from us to suit your needs, you can do that. If, that probably is something that we can do on a more short-term basis, at, at some point, as opposed to throwing thousands, or hundreds of thousands of dollars into a building that we won't own, and then even if we have a lease on it, we, we just don't know. I think we're, we're putting the horse before the cart in this situation.
Okay. The issue is, the building that we're talking about is a lease with the option to purchase, so it's not a throwing away money in a long-term lease.
But it doesn't mean. For me, it doesn't mean that it's still gonna be the most viable space for the, for the town police. And I still think, as, as much as I hear, excuse me, as much as I hear from the residents, I think that there needs to be a presence in town. And that's what the residents want. So even if you're saying, well, at one point, and in the future, yeah, that's the future, but if you want a space now, we need to be thinking about what we can do now. And I'm saying, the residents want, and the residents are not happy with what they're saying. Because every time someone calls, so when you talk about police presence, when someone calls the police, of course, we're always told to call 911, but if we really need something, then we can't get it. We can't, it's always go to 911. So I think having that police presence in town is very important. I'm not the person that's just saying that myself. I'm saying it because this is what I hear. These are the complaints that I hear, and I've experienced it myself. So, so if I'm experiencing it, I can't imagine having, you know, financing something that's outside of the town at this point. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, well, I'm sorry to, I mean, for hearing this, because I, I've not heard of any complaints from you or anybody else, so I'm sorry.
Well, Chief, I, I have a right to change my opinion and to mull over the, the facts, so that I make sure that I'm making a good decision for this town. So you have not, because I was trying to determine whether or not this would be a good viable option for the town, and to also listen to the people that I represent, which are the residents. So it's just not based on what you think is best, and, you know, it's also based on what the residents want, and what the residents are saying and not saying.
I agree, that's what, that's what I was trying to say. I agree, I'm just trying to say, you brought up, there were some issues. That's fine, I mean, we can discuss that later, but, okay, I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, ultimately, it's up to the board.
Yeah, I just wanna, so I just wanna make sure I've got what I've heard out of that, which is that Commissioner Duckett would like us to inquire about the Herbert Building, consider satellite offices, and she'd like to have us have our own dispatch for police. So I want to give the other Commissioners a chance to each kind of, so that we, we can figure out where the board is, each speak, so. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is, this is Commissioner Colbert. I'll, I'll say, I've had the opportunity to visit the space, and I've had the opportunity to visit the current police space in the town hall. Under, understanding some of the, the thought behind, you know, what it looks like if the, the police offices, you know, right outside the town limits versus directly in the town limits, I do think that particular space presents an opportunity where the police can be consolidated and have the resources they need to house equipment, to be responsive. I've taken the drive from that building into town, and things of that nature, and, and also serves a dual purpose of being an anchor for annexing more of the area into the town. I think if we're, if we're taking kind of a forward-looking approach, it is a space that would serve a lot of those purposes. And I really, personally, having looked at where things are stored in town hall, I don't think some of the things that are stored in town hall should probably be stored in a town hall that has, you know, presumably, you know, public access in and out, even though it is secure, even though it is locked up. I think it probably should be in a place that is more controlled, even than, even than that area that it is currently. And also, if we're able, if the opportunities exist, or we're able to get state funding to do a lot of this, as opposed to coming out of our coffers, I think those are things that we need to explore and be able to set ourselves up. Uh, and be able to set ourselves up these for these next next phases.
And I have a phone call about that tomorrow scheduled. Commissioner Coler.
I have a comment. I haven't gotten a chance to see this space yet. But I guess I guess my concern would be if we did have this new facility for the police department. Will services change for the town? Will we get more around the clock services? I mean. You know, I know we're trying to expand for the future, but currently, you know, we don't have twenty four hour. Police presence. Um, and we always have to call. Cause I was also told at one point to call nine one one, get a police. Uh, so make a report there and then. The town could look into it and I I did, I never asked why, but. Yeah, that tha- that would be the question. Why do I have to do that? In order to get services in our town where we pay taxes, we're all, we all pay taxes here. Um, so how is this police department supporting us? Um, well, we have issues that come up in the town. I'm not opposed entirely to. Um, having a new facility, but I want to know how. This gonna make it better? Are we gonna have more? Participation from the police department here or do we still have to go to call nine one one and to? Um, make a report and then you guys look into it.
I'm gonna ask Chief, I know you've done this before, but if you could explain the liability and the reason that we go through county, just never heard. Why we go through county dispatch and then of course, like what it would take? Maybe number of officers are financially for us to have our own dispatch and twenty four hour service. This is not financially feasible, but I'm gonna let Chief kinda explain it.
Okay, so um, the first part of it, no, the police services would not change. Because the location change does not mean that the police services change. It literally takes three point five minutes to get from the building. To town currently. Um, I've driven it multiple times, three point five minutes, which is no difference than leaving town hall going downtown. Um, the reason why. You call nine one one is because there are twenty three. Municipal police departments in Prince George's County. The only police departments in Prince George's County that self dispatch, meaning they call. Their dispatch center in that municipality is the city of Bowie, New Carrollton. Hyattsville, Greenbelt, Bladensburg, and I might be missing one other. Those are the only municipal and Laurel. Those are the only municipalities that self dispatch their own police department officers. Every other municipality has to go through the Prince George's County nine one one or the non emergency number. It is because the calls are recorded, the calls are documented and the calls are actually dispatched to the officers that are working. The reason for that is is liability. If someone calls town hall and. We dispatch an officer, but that person is still talking to the nine one one or the person in town hall. And not telling them everything that's going on. So they said that somebody was. Uh, stealing something, but it turned into an actual robbery. So now our officers are driving to a call thinking that they're going to a theft call when it's actually an armed robbery. That is a liability for the town. That puts those officers in danger. That's not something that municipalities do and it's not something we're gonna do. So I've been saying for four years, you have to call nine one one through the proper channel, which is the Prince George's County Communications Center. I've said that ever since I've been here. What they did in the past.
I wasn't, I wasn't here, so I didn't know that, so that's.
I'm just explaining, I'm explaining the whole process. So the reason why is because it cuts down on liability so that an officer is being dispatched to a call. If the person stays on the phone with the nine one one operator, then that officer is given updated information. As they're driving to the scene, whether it's a non emergency call or a priority call. That's why you do that. So if you've ever called nine one one, that's why they ask you like twenty questions at the beginning of the call to make sure that they have. All of the information. So that when they're dispatching the officers, they have the proper call type. And what's supposed to be the response for that particular officer or set of officers. That's not my system. That's how it's set up in Prince George's County. So, um. Outside of that, to probably do a nine one one center. It'll easily cost a minimum of a half a million dollars plus. Because you have to go through a state system, a county system, it it requires um. Computers, wiring, um antennas, repeaters, things that you have to be able to dispatch. Officers from that location. There's nowhere in town hall to do that. That means you need to hire dispatchers that work twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. So all of that is something that we cannot do as a small town municipality. Bowie has been a police department for fifteen years and I think their dispatch center is maybe about six or seven years old. So they have way more people than we do, so I don't know. How we'll ever get there. I mean, I hope we'll get there in the future, but right now that is not even possible. So that's why we go through nine one one. That's why we call the non emergency number because we cannot do that from town hall. We cannot sustain that.
Thank you for explaining. I never knew that. I never knew the process, so I'm new to this. I'm still learning and that's why I asked the question. Thank you.
And for the record, just and for the record, just to let you know, so I know the. Mayor said that I said or your understanding was that I was asking for a call center. That is not what I said. That was not what my comment was.
Okay, I'm sorry. You said you wanted to be able to call the police directly.
No, I didn't say I need to be able to call them directly. I'm saying that when I, when when there's a need to call nine one one. Then we need to have some type of action to know that our police follow up with with uh whatever that situation is. It shouldn't be. Someone has to come to your house if they give a report or don't. For example, someone had to come to my house. I had to call nine one one because there was an accident. Someone ran into our vehicle sitting in our driveway. I was told call nine one one as we normally are and that's what I did. So that's totally fine. But then there was no, like in in terms of them giving me an actual report. I received nothing from the police, not a report or anything. So my concern is. Residents should be able to receive a little bit more from our police to actually make sure, like what is the issue? Let me get what you need, not leave it up to the resident to co- have to go and search and find the report. To s- to to follow up with their insurance or whatever the case is. They need to do their due diligence. If that's, you know, these are all the additional services you wanna prov- I mean, whether you're saying that you provide. But if you're not doing that admin part of it, then that's a real huge component that's missing.
So you want better communication between the two departments?
Can you talk about?
Yes, that's some of it.
Makes sense, that makes sense.
So let me, let me, okay. So let me just say this, um, because you brought up your particular incident, um. I came to your house the following morning. Um, I believe you all were still asleep. Um, I reached out to you on the cell phone and I did speak to your husband on that Monday. And I advised him what he should do in regards to the issue that he had with the Prince George's County Police Department.
Well, I will tell you, my husband would knew what to do because because of. Of cause relationship. So it was not because if you if you came, then you should have been able to tell us. That we will take care of that for you and get it for you. Not that my husband has to say that he will go and take care of it. And then he's only, oh, they didn't give you anything? No, the next response should be, we'll take care of that and get it for you. Not, okay, well.
This should be a forum for public opinion or. Private opinion, uh, private opinion shouldn't be, this shouldn't be a forum. It should be discussed later.
Well, I'm just saying.
I'm trying to make this clear because. Excuse me, I'm trying to make this clear because you said you made a comment to say that you came here to do X Y Z. What I'm saying to you is we still had to go elsewhere to get that report. So now, taking me and my situation out of it, that is the same thing that a residence wa- a resident would have to do. Because we're not offered that additional support. So that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so just to clarify and then we'll get off this topic. Your husband had a complaint. I cannot address the complaint that he had with the department. I told him how to address that complaint with the department because they did not do something they were supposed to do. Had they done what they were supposed to do, me following up would have just been that, a follow up.
What, what can, what can I just say? I'll just leave it where it is because I understand that we did not receive what we needed.
Well, that's because of the Prince George's County Police Department.
I would like to relieve it where it is. I'm not trying to argue with you about it. I heard and I understood what you said.
I'm sorry, I'm not arguing. I'm just just going over, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Outside of meeting minutes, please.
Yeah, hold on. I just wanna, I I just wanna overview the thing. Normally, when Prince George's County Police dispatches to an incident in the town of Upper Marlboro and there is a need for a report, Prince George's County. Provides that report to the resident. However, in this specific individual case, that did not happen. Um, and the complaint was against Prince George's County Police, so it needed to go into Prince George's County Police. Do I understand the 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 situation? Properly. That correct, Chief? Like that they, the report is given at the time or?
So in any case, if the Prince George's County Police responds to something, we know about it. No matter what it is, we know about it. Because we work together.
That's what I'm saying.
So if we have a situation, we handle it. If they have a situation and they don't handle it. Then that's on the 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 resident, business owner, whoever to complain to them because they were supposed to take their responsibility. That call is logged in under them, not us. So if a resident has a complaint about the town of Upper Marlboro Police, then feel free to bring that to us. But if the Prince George's County Police. Did not do something, the complaint should go to them and their supervisors. We can follow up on that, but the complaint is with that department and not ours. Because we did not cause that problem.
This is, this is what I'm saying. So we pay taxes, we pay the police department. So individual, a resident has an issue, take me out of the picture. And then if because we don't get what we need from the police department.
I need, because. Sorry, I need someone to turn on a camera, ca- because we don't have a forum. Commissioner a lot is on. It's just you and I. Sorry, Commissioner Handchuk or Cole, thank you. All right, you continue, go ahead.
Thank you. So the rea- so what I'm saying is, so now it's like blaming nine one one. Which we're supposed to call to say that, well, they didn't give you what you needed, so you need to go and complain to them. So well, where is the support then, the administrative support on this side of the house? For incidents that happen because if a resident can't obtain that information. It should be automatic that if you say you receive the information and you know what goes or or you receive a report. Then there should be an easy communication to say, hey, well, you know, I didn't get that. Can can. Police, oh, sure, we can help provide that. That's just a simple ask.
And we did that. So outside of your husband calling, we reached out to them and asked them why did they not do that? So we actually reached out to the District Two Police Station and said, why wasn't a report written? And there was not a sufficient answer given. Again, that case is under the Prince George's County Police.
But even if it's under the Prince George's County Police, that is again, to me, diverting the responsibility to another. To that police department just because they took the call. So where does our police department have any responsibility? To assist a resident? That is all I'm asking.
How how that, how we assist them was I reached out to the resident. The next day and I reached out to the resident two days after that.
Well, the thing is, um, if if someone is saying that they need a report, again. You're turning that into a situ- situation where you're leaving it up to the resident to say, well, that's not our problem. You need to actually go ahead and call the police, uh, the police. Somewhere else that took the call and get that report from them because that's not our problem. That you're blaming that on us, but it's not our problem. You're our police department that we should be able to go to you are to assist with any of these issues. And not just hard pushing off on someone else.
So I say something, now that I've learned the process, let me say something, Chief. Now that I've learned the process. Um, cause I didn't know what the process was, so thank you for explaining that. But I guess my question is, um. In mind with what she's saying is basically after you explained the process on why it's important for them to take the calls and the liabilities. And stuff like that. That's very important. I didn't know that, so thank you. But then after that fact, how does? The residents receive repo- um, support from the town when an incident happens? Do you follow up? What's the typical procedure after that? After. Cause I remember before I was a commissioner, I had um, I had an issue with my new neighbors. They were having parties and they had cars lined up. Up and down the road and I remember getting on the call and I asked. For assistance with with this issue because you couldn't even get into my driveway. And you had said that you had to make a non, you know, non emergency call first. And then you could do something. So what is that process? After you make that call. You 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 are able to, are you able to see the report? Ho- how do you, how are you made aware that a resident has made a report from nine one one?
So we get that information and just like what your situation that you're speaking about. We went and knocked on that resident's door and advised them along with our code enforcement that they could not park on the street. Late at night, blocking up the street, we just advised them what they should and should not be doing. That resident apologized, we offered them to park at the school board building because it was after hours. I've done that. At least four or five times for individuals on Rectory Lane as well as Wilson Lane. Again, when a resident has an issue and they reach out to us, we respond. Just like in every other case, we respond.
That's my point right there. So after, if I, if if I hadn't gotten on the call as a resident, regular town resident at that point, because that's. That's what I was, um, how would you have known that I was having an issue? Wouldn't, how would you find out from PG? Would you find out?
Because if you had called nine one one to complain about parties on the weekend, we would see that. As a pattern and then we would go knock on the door because normally you would give the address or say my neighbor to the left or to the right. Or we would have somebody on that evening shift looking into that to say, okay, well, this is the house. Let's address this matter with these residents now because we want everybody to live together in harmony in the town. So we would address it like we did. We went to that person's house and they actually said, well, if the person had just told us, we would have. Done better, but they didn't know because I believe they were new to the neighborhood.
Okay, so I need to call us to order because. So because this is, the the item we're under is police department office space and we're on police department procedure. I'm gonna make a note, um, so that we can kind of maybe do an informational session.
No, but that was important. That was important to know what the procedure is so that if there are any issues, we now understand what the process is. I never knew the process. So I never knew why we had to call nine one one. So I think that was very informative and very important.
Okay, but I do need to call us back to order onto the agenda. Director Bond, you're okay with that? Speak up if you're not. All right, so we're gonna. Sorry, go ahead. Okay, um, Commissioner Handchuk, I would like to get your feedback on the police office space. Um, because I'm kind of taking the tally here and then um, we can get on to the next item.
Okay, um, so. I'm fifty fifty on the issue, um. I'm fifty fifty on the issue. Um, I think it's important for the police department to have, uh, space. Uh, I just think it's a little early in the process, because we haven't annexed much yet. Um, I just really don't know yet. Um, I wanna see Darnell get some space. I, I, I just think a hundred thousand for the year is just too much. I, I don't think the county should have to support that. I'm sorry. And I once we annex more space, I will give you more leeway, but I just don't think I would vote for it right now. I apologize. Thank you.
So, that's fine. I'm not really asking for us to vote, but it sounds like the way things are split, the conversation to continue, especially with the feedback on state support. Um, I do just want to know, Director Bond, can you tell us what the last quote you got for public workspace was? I know that was like a year and a half or two years ago. But wasn't it like one twelve?
Yes, I believe it was in the ballpark of one twelve to one thirteen, uh, per year for commercial space.
So I think functionally, we all have to kind of like get used to that number, but we can ask, um, Chief, maybe your commercial real estate person is able to give kind of some feedback. But we'll just keep this on the old business here, so that we can move on.
Don't mean to be a downer, but can we find a double property or something? Like, I mean, I just-
So we'll have Chief, we'll, we'll have Chief and Director Bond keep working on this.
Thank you.
I just want to move us along, because we spent a lot of time on this item.
Can I just, just, just one, one, one last comment, if you, if you don't mind? I just wanted to say, uh, like, I, I know we're, we're talking a lot about the cost of that. That is definitely what we are, uh, what we have stewardship over of the town. But I also want us to keep in mind that there, you know, are lots of opportunities for state-funded, uh, spaces or municipalities for improvements that we need to explore. I don't think we've done, and forgive me if I'm, if I'm speaking incorrectly, but I don't know if we've done enough work in really exploring what some of the other state and county funding sources are for a lot of these things. So, uh, I'm, I'm not necessarily for, you know, our pot of money being the first pot of money, uh, funding a lot of things, if there are other buckets out there that we can explore. And that's, that's not just for the police space, but for public workspace or any of these other types of initiatives that we have going on. So I just, I just want to leave, leave that there.
And that's the phone call I have tomorrow. So we'll keep this on the agenda. We'll come back to it. We'll have Chief keep moving and gathering that information. Um, and let's move on to the next item. Uh, so the next item is the vision plan. I know last time there were concerns about potentially some of the recommendations, but no specifics. So I wanted to, each meeting, just spend five to ten minutes breaking down the recommendations of the plan. So, um, the first section is the biggest section, but we're only dealing with, um, the beginning of it. Uh, it's basically a place to connect. People want to know their neighbors. They want to go to events. They want to have places to meet up. They want to be able to get around, um, through bike, walking, van vehicle. Um, so most people said, you know, I'd just like to come home here and feel like it's a place I can relax, and it's not like my job in the city, and I can be with my neighbors or be in my house. So if we can go to the next slide, John, we'll see the specific kind of recommendations around walking and, um, this one's on walking. So walking is connections to ensure residents can travel through town along a sidewalk network. So that's school lane, Old Crane Highway, Rectory Lane, Old Mill Road potentially, uh, Peerless Avenue, which is outside of town, but was planning to be in town when this plan was written, and may be. Um, Route seven twenty-five and two oh two, so we're talking Main Street. I know a lot of our residents walk out to three oh one, um, and up to two oh two. It's very, if you want to take your car to Marlboro Tire and walk home, it's pretty, pretty hairy there at two oh two. Uh, and then Spring Branch Road, uh, that has a question mark. Is there some real concerns about whether it's possible to do it there because of the width and the, uh, right-of-way? Does this sound like something, like are there any objections to these ideas?
No, can I make a comment about this? Um, I want to say that the bus stops, uh, I don't know if it's middle school, high school, at the end of Rectory, and the bus stops and the kids get on and off and it's safe. But if you just go down a hundred feet, what is it, two hundred feet maybe? There's a crosswalk that's not lit up, it's not painted anymore. It's just not there. It's where the, um, fire hydrant guy had. It's dangerous.
The pro, right, so, um, I-
I think that the email I got the other day, I just want to make sure.
Yes, um, Director Bond and I have been in communications with S H A on this. Um, I made some higher up phone calls because Director Bond was not getting responses, and we are starting to get some responses. And, uh, you were about to say something, so I don't know, did Derek get back to you this week already? No?
Nobody got back to me yet. I mean, oh, sorry.
He has not, but I was, uh, just about to say what you said, Mayor, and, uh, um, just address Commissioner, uh, oh, Commissioner Hanchet's, uh, uh, comment, that, uh, we have been in communication, uh, that, uh, service request has been in since early June. And, uh, we are now starting to get some word, thanks to the mayor's higher up phone calls. So we should have some sort of, uh, E T A on, uh, completion. Uh, I don't believe it'll happen until it gets a little warmer, so the paint can properly adhere. Uh, but we should at least have an E T A soon.
Hopefully by the end of this week or next.
I know the fire hydrant is still laying on the gra, on the sidewalk there, but it just, it's, it's an issue that I, I just want that painted. It's important, not only for me, but other people. Thank you.
Um, yes, and to that point, I definitely totally agree with, um, Commissioner, um, Hatchett on that, because I was wondering if there's some type of light, maybe that could be put there, maybe like you press, you know, press the button, give people a chance to get across, um, just some soft light that, that's, I don't know what that would take.
It interfered with the camera, I was told. Oh.
I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna, and I'm sure safe crossings, which is the second one, I'm gonna add a bullet point about, um, bump outs and, uh-
Sidewalks for the kids.
So the sidewalks are that first item. And then, so ensure safe crossings is where we get crosswalks, um, these are the intersections where there's problems. But I'm gonna also put bump outs and, um, lights as like a two-study. And Meaden Hunt, well, I get, probably not Meaden Hunt can do that, but S H A, we can talk to them about.
I'm sorry, can I add something to the record?
Yeah.
I just wanted to add to the record that I would like a police officer to stand there and just observe maybe a couple afternoons. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see if we can do that without endangering a police officer. Um, and Chief and I will talk about that. Uh, so ensure safe crossings, we get to what we're talking about, which is the cross, that where we're crossing. Right, so, um, so Old Crane and School Lane over here, which there's a ladder into the county D P W and P, because this telephone hall keeps getting hit, and that can be a pervert. Um, so we're, we're working with them on that, and the county executive's office, and our councilman's office. Um, then we have Rectory, Wilson, and School Lane. Um, that's kind of the crosswalk. To some extent, and the Old Mill Road, Elm Street, Route seven twenty-five are the crosswalks that we're talking about right now. That, right now, we're just asking them to stripe it, but ultimately, yes, there needs to be more to that, whether it's lights or whether it's like a structural way to slow people down. Um, and so we're agreeing on that. The Highway Monument, um, and this is kind of a, like my experience, the same way Commissioner Duckett was saying, I had this experience, what about other residents? At that monument, there's lots of people that walk from Old Crane, um, but they can't get around, 'cause it's not safe. So how do we create a crossing there? Um, seven twenty-five and two oh two will hopefully be in town soon, but that's another unsafe intersection. And then this kind of like a longer term thing is like pedestrian bridges at high traffic locations, which is sort of like what's happening, gonna happen at Water Street with the bridge being built, and it's gonna have a pedestrian access on the bridge. Um, but it has a separate pedestrian bridge now, that type of thing. I've added the bump outs and lights to study to that. Is there anything else I should add to that?
I would like to, I would like to point out that I have concerns with, and I talked to Kyle about it before, um, the Pepco line, those wires. Um, a lot of times you see the trees overgrown around them, and it makes it difficult for them to cut them because the wires are there. But also, um, it seems like when you disconnect the service or whatever, you know, they leave all those wires hanging. And then like when Tom had this tree fall down, he had that, you know, the power line went down. So can we do something, try to, uh, you know, keep the same ambiance up in town? But can we kind of do something with those Pepco lines and maybe have them underground or something?
So that's actually, um, just to call us back to this, because that is actually in the plan. Um, and I want to say it's later on. It's like in the place that thrives or place that's safe.
Very- I thought you just wanted comments.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's my comment.
So that will be, that's somewhere in here, and we're talking with Pepco already about purchasing and that.
Yeah, Pepco is actually gonna be coming, trimming, or we're having trees around.
They're gonna, yeah.
So are, are we in the vision plan? Is it eventually in there that we bury? Go, go on the ground with these wires, because I think it's so unsafe.
Yeah, so the, the burying of the wires is a vision plan goal. Sorry, um, John, can you go to the next slide?
I was gonna say, you're talking to a commissioner that just has his wires knocked out. Underground would be awesome. I grew up in a community where they're all underground. It wasn't an issue. I just don't know proximity to the Atlantic Coast here, if that's possible. I heard there's an issue with that. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely one of the longer term things, and it's possible that when I transferred, yes, and that's one of kind of the things that's going on with Pepco right now. Um, so we can talk more about, let me add-
It's a geology thing. It's not always possible.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna make sure that that gets for next time, the, um, sorry, Darnell, were you talking?
Yeah, you can go ahead and finish, Mayor.
I'm just writing it down, 'cause I'm trying to stay in the-
Right, so when you come up to it, if we have it, we can discuss it further. That'd be great.
Did you want to say something?
Yes, just to touch on, uh, Commissioner Lot's comment. Um, Pepco, uh, actually had their, uh, forester, uh, make contact with the town. Um, and they left their contact info. I actually reached back out to him, because they're supposed to be, uh, doing some tree work and some trimming within town. And I made recommendations along with, um, uh, addresses of, uh, places that, uh, just that we've noticed that need to be trimmed. And, uh, he actually came out, took a look at those places and made note of it. He also will contact me when they get on site, um, just to make sure that, uh, they hit all the areas. Now, they say that some of them, uh, if they, you know, of course, they have to keep their costs down. If they don't deem it necessary, they won't touch, but it will be on their radar, and I will be on site with them when they do it.
Just so everyone knows, Director Bond is following up on all the things that got damaged over the holiday. Um, it's just that so much stuff got damaged throughout the county and, uh, I think W F C is Montgomery and Prince George, and so it's-
Thank you, Darnell.
Temporarily, but we will get long-term solutions too. So, um-
Thank you, Darnell. I just want to show my appreciation.
Um, so traffic study to look at bike lanes. This is a kind of a weaker area of the plan, because I have not been able to get a biker to, um, sit down and talk with me. I like wave them down. I'm like, hey, can we talk about the bike lanes? But they want to keep biking. Um, so Main Street through downtown is kind of a hairy place to bike, um, because it's so narrow and people are traveling so fast. Um, Old Marlboro Pike and Old Crane Highway, same deal, um, and I do see bikers in those locations a lot. Uh, so, you know, out to three oh one, Route two oh two, these are places I've seen bikers around or seen the need to bike in between places. Um, so if anyone knows a biker, if anyone hasn't, is a biker and has other, um, additions, let me know. Okay, um, and then trail connections. So that's kind of talking about, so actually, the way that's written is this, it goes back to the actual document in your, um, in your packet, which talks about off-road trails connecting through Peerless, Western Branch, Anacostia Harage area trails, Chesapeake Beach Railway Trail, um, Schoolhouse Pond connectors, Valley Lane connector, Marlboro Town connector, Old Golf Course walking trails connector to two oh two. I'm not sure if we can get into W B N A. That's probably a long Chesapeake. Um, but this is, this is kind of the thing that Better City is working on a map for right now. So that would be good to look at once they get that done. Um, and then, um, wayfinding for those trails. More comments on these ones, additions, anything? We'll leave this for now, and we'll just take it in bite-sized pieces, so we don't eat up too much time with it. Um, let's move on to the ethics. And, John, if you could, I'll just do this. Thank you.
So the ethics, um, the town currently has an ethics ordinance. It is twenty sixteen zero four. Um, and it basically does set the standards for ethics. Um, and the town can establish an ethics commission, but it's not required to, because there's an exemption because of the population size. Once you reach eighteen hundred residents, you will be required to complete the financial disclosure forms, uh, that are required by state mandate. And currently, we're exempted from that because of our population. Um, one thing that you all could look at is taking, uh, ordinance twenty sixteen oh four, beefing it up. Um, another thing, uh, that could be proposed is you all could create a community committee, uh, that would address, um, ethics, ethics issues or ethics complaints, uh, that come along. Uh, but that's another thing you might want to consider, you know, down the road. There you are.
And I think this is kind of where we came out, which we were talking about, um, the fact that there's no repercussions, right, in the, in the charter for us doing something wrong or not doing our job or like that kind of thing. And I think this is where we came over with this to the ethics. Um, and so, yes, it's a question of whether we, you know, have a board to review, but what happens if there's an ethics violation? Um, and how do we proceed? Comment? Okay, um-
Well, I mean, uh, uh, sorry. I was just gonna say, I think kind of at this point with the population that we have, the part of the reality is the, the only real, um, what's the word, uh, repercussion is at the ballot box. You know, we, we don't have the population and probably don't have the funds to sustain a full-on ethics commission at this time. Maybe that's something we need to explore, what the cost of something like that would be for, for our town. Uh, and you know, we, I, I, I would support having that conversation. But, uh, until we get to that point, um, you know, we, I don't know, it's, it's a, it's a difficult kind of situation. I don't know if I have the answer to right now, but.
I guess, so we were, we were talking about this when we were talking about the financial. I don't know if you guys remember this, but like, we were talking about how with the financial legislation package that we just did, now the mayor has the ability to authorize like higher amounts of money. And yet there's no balance check repercussions around any of that. So, and, and I had kind of committed to you guys at the time that we would discuss this and figure that out. Um, but we all, we all tired of the resolutions for purchasing.
So what do you think that, uh, this would put a boundary on the mayor?
Should put a boundary on the mayor, but on all of us, really. Yeah.
But we don't, as far as what finances you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, well, for all of the ethical.
But, but we don't really, all of us don't really have any money. So the financial part is actually done through the administrative team, so.
The treasurer, the mayor and the, um, staff. Yeah.
That's not it?
Right.
Right. So.
So I guess it's, it's coming to, I don't know, how, um, if you can kind of jump in to help me articulate what I'm trying to say is about like, there's nothing, is, there's nothing legally stopping the mayor from saying, let's spend ten thousand dollars on purple paint and paint every tree in town purple.
But don't we all have to agree to that though?
But do we? That's, that's what I'm talking about.
Why wouldn't we? With, with the commission board, if we don't have to agree on letting the mayor spend ten thousand dollars on Barney paint?
But I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the, the package we just passed allows, allows the mayor to authorize up to that amount without our, without bringing it to the board. So if it's ten thousand and one dollars on Barney paint, then yeah, it would have to come to the. But, but if it's.
I agree.
Nine hundred ninety-nine, then, you know, she could, if, if she could paint the whole town, you know, purple or pink for that, then that, you know, we don't have the oversight of that. I think, I think that's the question. Um, do, I don't.
It's cut.
Maybe.
Yeah.
No, I was just gonna say, maybe I don't have the most updated package, but was this ethics ordinance included in tonight's package?
It's not. Um, I think we're trying to keep concerned.
The current ethics ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's available online.
Okay.
Um.
Think with all of us, so we can look at it and then we can visit this on the twenty-fourth? Back on the calendar.
Right. So I'm not painting trees and Kyle would do his best to stop me from painting trees.
Kyle is not gonna stop you. He's gonna say, if the mayor wants to paint a tree, let the mayor paint the tree.
He's gonna say, ah, eh.
There's also, uh.
Got that with the bore?
It has to be a budgeted item, um.
Yeah.
Mayor can do up to ten thousand, all of the budgets have those. So I mean, I guess you could pull from like the beautification budget, which is about ten thousand.
Right. But if, but if that money is already, since you said it has to be a budget approved item, wouldn't that money already be allocated to something else? So the only funds would be the contingency fund that's available because it's not. Right. Right. They're not budgeted, but they are budgeted. It's like a placeholder.
There needs to be something, some way to check and balance that.
opposed to that.
So, and that.
I apologize. Uh, Kyle, your heart is.
That puts it back on the board to vote.
Oh, you have to move a bit closer.
No.
So then that has to, that means that it puts it back on the, it makes it a board decision. I, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
And the board can always, if, if you have a rogue mayor, the board can always take legislative action as a majority and change rules.
Right.
Of course. So if it's, if it becomes an issue that the mayor's spending over, the board has that legislative option. Um, of course, that's a bit more long-term.
Yeah.
Uh, it's like a month or two to take effect. Um, but that's something I'm.
Yeah, I feel like there should be some kind of way to, to stop something wacky or to basically, if, um, authorizing purple paint every other day, like you guys should be able to stop that.
Maybe a, a council season to assist.
Something like that. Anyway, that's what, that's what.
Put you on timeout. No more purple paint.
Um, right. Like there, is there, there's a way to like, stop the treasurer, stop the president and use the other one or use another commissioner. Like there needs to be some guardrails, I think. That was, that was what we, that discussion we had in October.
Or what is that? So, or I have another question. So in that ethic, if a person, anybody on the board is incompetent, how do we address that? If we see that they're deteriorating and they're incompetent, how do we address that?
Right.
Without saying, you're, you're crazy. You know, we can just.
You're buying purple paint, you're lost.
Yeah, well, so how can we address that? Can we actually associate that with the, the ethic?
That'll probably be more looking at the charter and ethics, um, where stuff clicks in because the charter gives power for pretty much when people are elected. The charter protects them for the two terms till the next election. As Commissioner Culver mentioned, the ballot box is, is a big check right now. That's why one of the decisions went. There are some early discussions before about going on a possible four-year terms. And there are concerns about, um, possibly putting in, if, if we were going to four years, we have to have a recall election versus now, if a year, every two years you have that recall vote, pretty much you have the ability to recall some.
But yes, I refuse to sign.
And that, some municipalities did see where the mayor, it was clear to say the mayor had the, it's, it's a live and learn experience in some places. Um, and there are some places where the mayor refuses to sign something and the hard law of the town, this was when Prince George County lost out on a huge grant because the mayor refused to sign. There is nothing that the other four against one could do to trigger it. So after that ordeal, the four to one changed the rules to allow the, the mayor to pretend to sign if the board.
Which is maybe something we just should learn from other people, you know? Yeah, if I just signed stuff for the splash pad money, like if I was just like, no, I just decided, no, I'm not gonna sign it. There's nothing anybody else, anybody else can do.
Yeah, it's active for the mayor's signature, so that may be something.
Yeah, so that should be involved somewhere as well. Yeah.
So if the mayor's unwilling, but the majority of the board overrides, then the.
Right. If, if it's a four-one vote, the mayor can't then veto it by refusing to sign.
And then, of course, all the people who touch money are bonded as well. So that's an extra layer of protection. But that's more for, that's not spending haphazardly. That's more of a fraud.
I think this is something that probably needs continued conversation as well, but I want us to keep having these conversations. So we get to something we can get put in.
I mean, all of these ideas, we should go around, we should, you know, go around and actually give more suggestions to this so that you can come up with something that everybody had a part in, um, creating.
So I think it would be helpful to admit, what we can say is we've got the suggestions from tonight and then if we can email John, right, John can be the collector of, and copy Kyle maybe, so Kyle, uh, what? Email John and let him know what additional things you think should be dealt with. Then we can work with Kevin and Kyle and John to get something drafted. That may take a little more than, you know, by the end of the month, so this will probably stay on here for a little bit, but it's important. All right. Anyone else have anything to say on that? All right. We're gonna move on to new business, which is gonna be elections. That's still you, Clark Houston.
All right. Um, Kyle, do you want me to present your memo or do you want to do yours?
Yeah, you can forward it. You got it.
Okay, cool. All right. So the memo that you all had in your packet from Kyle basically talks about, as you all saw before, uh, back in September, uh, the election ordinance that was presented to you all. Um, at the time, there was a lot of things going on with the election. We had the charter amendment that came through. Um, there was a lot of things happening. So we are now bringing it back up because of course at the end of this coming November, we are going to, of course, enter election season again. And so we just want to get some housekeeping going, uh, with the proposed draft ordinance that would address the following. Uh, that would regulate the placement of candidate election signage, uh, clearly set job functions for town staff and the board of elections, set the compensation for the board of elections, authorize a candidate night or debate, set standards in the event of board chooses to use voting machines and sets a clear process for the vote count. So, uh, last night I had the opportunity to meet with our board of elections, board of supervisors of elections. And, um, they have reviewed, uh, the, the proposed election ordinance. And the only things that they addressed last night during the meeting were to change, possibly, potentially change the polling hours from seven AM to eight PM to eight AM to seven PM. Um, because they felt that the seven to eight o'clock hour in the morning, nobody came. Um, and they had people starting to arrive at eight. And then people that get out of work usually between five and seven, uh, they would be there. As long as they're in the line by seven, they would be, of course, people could still vote. So they're not, you know, telling people that they can't vote, but you know, they would at least, you know, be able to close the polls a little bit earlier so that the vote count can take place. Um, the poll location, they love the poll location here at town hall. It does provide easy access for town residents. Um, they do like the idea of holding a candidate forum. Um, they would like to have it, um, of course, hosted by an outside host or moderator. Uh, the town, of course, would be responsible for the publicity and the infrastructure. And the questions that are asked of the candidates, of course, need to be geared towards the town. Uh, compensation, uh, they like the current amount of a compensation. Uh, compensation, of course, would be scheduled a little bit, uh, you know, accordingly, uh, to allow them to receive their funds in a timely manner. Uh, election judges, the change there would be, uh, the election judges would be selected by an application process embedded by the board of supervisors of elections. They would conduct interviews. The board of supervisors of elections will select two election judges per election cycle. Uh, the board of supervisors of elections will select a chairperson at the next meeting, which will be in February. Uh, this person will be responsible for facilitating meetings and making sure things are done expeditiously. The, they do also like the hundred-foot rule of electioneering that will remain in place. Uh, closing of the polls will be announced five minutes before they are closed, uh, to make sure that people know that that is happening. And we have also talked about, uh, in the summer, we are going to host a candidate information evening to help attract viable candidates to run for the board of commissioners. And we are hoping to invite representatives from MML, of course, have you all there in hopes that we can get, um, some viable candidates to want to run in the fall. Um, but overall, the board of supervisors of elections is very pleased with the, uh, proposed election ordinance. Um, if everything goes as planned, the potential ordinance timeline would be, of course, we're introducing it this evening at the January work session. In February, we would draft the ordinance presented to the board. You would get it in February. At the February town meeting, the ordinance would be introduced and a public comment period would, would happen. In March, of course, work session, we would do another form of discussion. And at the March town meeting, uh, there would be a public comment period and board vote. There you are.
Does anyone have comments, questions about the timeline or about the ordinance itself? Um, I caught a few typos. We'll get those fixed. Um, or about the, the memo from the board of supervisors of elections?
And the memo's on page fifty-two. From the elections of that.
Yeah, for the new, not the packet I have. Yeah. Um, I think, like, I think these timelines make sense to move to February because we're starting to move into budget stuff and we're gonna be doing a lot. So, you know, not trying to hit January with them is probably helpful. What does everyone think?
Um, I think their review, um, is, is pretty good. I mean, I have no additional suggestions. Um, thank you, John. It sounds like, uh, you know, it's pretty thorough. I kind of like what they came up with, so, um. Outside of that, I don't have any additional comments. The time change also was a good idea.
Commissioner Mancha here. I just want to say, good job. Thank you, John. And I think it's thorough.
So we'll keep plugging away on this, um, internally and we'll look at it again. Oh, John gave me a copy. Okay, sorry. Um, all right. So we'll move on to the events recap and calendar. We'll go back over to Administrator Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll tag team it with Commissioner Lot because we had the events meeting on last Thursday, um, where we went through this list. Um, so, uh, our new event coordinator, Lisa, she went through our last year's agenda, or last year's timeline events and just kind of plugged the days to make sure they worked into the calendar. Um, and brought it up to the events committee to kind of give their input on going on. Um, one of the things that this list has changed was the elimination of one movie night. From four to three movie nights, it'll be June, July and August movie nights, um, to see how that participation goes. And then making sure that the July movie night lines up with Darnell's Champ, um, Ice Cream Social. Because that was a big hit. And then also looking at some potential locations for the movie night being Darnell's Champ. I have, they have a located bathroom facility, so we don't have to rent a board office. But something that we're gonna be discussing with Darnell's Champ hopefully. Um, but this is just the list for events committee. Obviously, we'd be talking to the green team, historic cert and, um, the arts council as well to kind of build off this list as well. Um, but the big kind of things that we're looking to move forward now that we're kind of, we have the events coordinator brought on board is kind of looking at major events four to six months out. So the major events, what we consider major events will be Marlboro Day, um, Cruising on Main Street, um, Truck or Tree and the Tree Lighting Christmas Town event, I think are the biggest, like, multi-lane closures, all hands on deck type events. Um, and just, uh, planning stuff four to six months out. So we could be looking at a couple of events at a time. We could be looking at Cruising on Main Street and Christmas Town kind of the same time, or Truck or Tree and Christmas Town at the same time, just a couple of months out, um, just to kind of give us heads up so we're not scrambling last minute. And also putting together, um, we're looking into some different vendor signup payment portals because right now we have multiple links. We have, uh, it's where the vendors sign up, um, through the town website and they have to pay at another link, but we're looking at, uh, using existing popular platforms such as Eventbrite where they can, the vendors can print their own passes. So especially if we're doing a road closure, large vending event and they're pulling up in their car, they, they're showing the one pager that they printed or a QR code on their phone.
And that would take off from the volunteers having to make that and do that. Yeah.
Just, that's just something we're looking into. Well, once we kind of look at that and see it and then advertise the plans for the events. So making sure like six months out that it's on calendar, the town calendar, on the website, it's on Facebook as an event. It doesn't have too many details, but at least save the date six months out. Um, and then just reaching out to, uh, because a lot of these events use, um, different spaces a lot, such as the Main Street pedestrian mall, where every time we use it, we have to put in special event applications, parking planning. If we can cut back on some of the paperwork, we just entered the M O U S, where we kind of automatically have the use without having to ask permission every time. But it's just, I, I don't know if the, did I miss anything, Commissioner Lot? I think we, okay.
So we kind of dissected, um, some of the things that went wrong too, um, on the, uh, the day of these events. So I think the fact that we discussed them, we know what they are moving forward. We've, uh, made suggestions to correct those issues and to make things more functional. And, um, adding rain dates, we know that that's a big deal, uh, making sure that we have a backup plan. Um, so I think other than that, we've touched on that, we've touched on everything.
And I forgot to add, um, they're looking to do either a poetry night or a game night, something small indoor in March. Um, to the kind of get back in a very town-focused, small-scale sort of thing.
Talked about doing it in here too.
Yeah, the poetry was super fun. So, yeah. Um, I just want to, like, make sure we all kind of understand, like, one of the reasons that we have to plan this, like especially a bigger event out is because we have a small staff. So when we're having a big event, um, it's everyone on staff. So becau- just because we all are, we're all on the same page when people come to us and they. becau- just because we all are, we're all on the same page. When people come to us mid-year and say, we want to have this big event, I just want us all to be.
Oh, no, we understand, we understand that it has to be planned out, and that's why now that we have an events coordinator, um, it should be a lot smoother because we can get the that we need, um, we can brainstorm, and then she can run with it. So I think, um, so far, uh, just the first meeting, she seems to be, um, on top of things. She seems to be focused, and that is great.
Because I feel like we want to say yes when people come to us with big events, right? And we've kind of had that, so just want to make sure all five of us are like, we understand that it means all hands on deck and our, our staff needs to see their families. So. All right.
So I just like to say something.
Yeah.
So Kyle, for the October National Face and Blue, it's actually October fourteenth and not the seventh.
Thank you. I saw that email today. Uh, let's read it, so.
Yes, the fourteenth. And also, just to add that, um, I'm not sure if you all thought about giving individuals a timeline, so if somebody does come to the board about an event, it should be at least, you know, twenty, thirty days out and not something the same week or two weeks out where we're pressing the staff together to try to put something together. I don't know if you all thought about that. And then, in a lot of these events, what is the request from the police department and public works ahead of time so that we can prepare these weekend, um, events with our staffing?
Yeah, and I think the policy is actually, like, especially if they want to do a street closure, that it needs to be
Well, we're going to have a form. We're going to have a form.
So that we have a form, actually.
Do we, we have a special event, that's for outside people who want to do, um, so we can do another form or internal.
Yeah, if committees want to add an event mid-year.
It'd be, I would think immediately, like, road closure versus not.
And that's why we'll have the form, because we'll have all of those questions on it, so we don't forget something.
So the other thing we can do with that form is create a calendar that blocks out dates. So not only would each of our major events be blocked out, but our rain dates, and then the weekend before and the weekend after, so like, you know, so we're not wearing our staff out. That, please. Um, that, um, would help reduce, like, so, you know, these are the blackout dates. You can't add an event during these dates.
Yeah, we just attach it to the event calendar for the year, um, to the form, say, prefer to attachment A.
I would say, like, block out dates because we're going to need the day app, whatever the rain date is.
Yeah, we put the rain dates in the calendar.
Okay, and then I think we, we can't have, like, if we do October twenty-eighth, right, and then we're going, because we'll, we have a lot of stuff going on with the horse shows, we may need to block out, like, you can't have an event in October because we have too many. So we should maybe ask Lisa to put something like that together.
Um, so we do a form and.
The only concern I would have is, like, if you have, um, for instance, the first week of December, I'm just using that as a mark. Um, we have, we plan a Christmas thing, and then the next weekend is the block, is the block, black, block date because it's our rain date.
Right.
And then the town, the, the staff needs the rest, so then the following weekend also is flat, is blocked out. So that's my question. So that's like three weekends in a row that's blocked out. Because we may not even use the rain date, right?
So does that, it may just be the weekend before, but maybe staff internally can, can discuss that and kind of present something to us for us to make the decision based on their input.
But you see how I'm saying it's, it looks like it's three weekends.
Yeah, it's all sudden, three weekends.
Yeah.
I bet you're working those three weekends.
Right, but it's blocked off.
Yeah, that was a great update.
Yeah, because you guys planned all your vacations.
Yeah, we planned it. It's a couple of planned our vacation for the day after, the, the rain day, what ended up being the rain day for Christmas Town, so.
All right, so let's try and move on to our next calendar, which is the budget calendar.
Um, so we're coming back on the fun season of the year for the town, uh, the FY twenty twenty-four budget time. Um, so we're trying to put a preliminary calendar in front of the board. Um, I tried to cut back on the amount of extra work sessions we do. Obviously, if the board wants to flesh out some of these discussions, it would take, um, some extra work sessions that we've done in the past. Um, so obviously, we're starting, um, kind of discussing it now, um, and then the board could, and we can nail that in the calendar, we can pass the resolution.
I'm sorry, can people shut their microphones off? I can't hear, sorry. Like I, yeah.
Might be.
Oh, when you turn your, Kyle, when you turn your head to the left, it's harder to hear, so you probably need to turn your head to the right. For some reason, when you put your head down to the left, we can hardly hear you. Thank you.
Really? Okay.
That's weird.
That's why we're doing this test run here, okay. Um, pretty much, I, I laid out, much, okay.
He's facing away from the microphone. That's why we're laughing.
It's, I kind of laid it out. Um, one of the big things is kind of giving the board opportunity to kind of discuss some of the priorities, um, ahead of time, early on, so staff can start budgeting, like, roads are number one, and obvi- hopefully the playground be completed. Um, but just kind of get those priorities so that when we start developing the budget, we can see different budget line items addressing the priorities of the board. But we have it kind of going through tax rate discussions, trying to build in enough time for public comment. Um, and then the introduction, the big thing to highlight, I bumped it, and this may be ambitious, but having the approval of the budget ordinance at the May town meeting versus, um, the June town meeting, because especially now that we've flopped the days of the meeting, if we approve it in late May versus trying to call a special town meeting, um, in June, that would be easier. In that way, we're done with the budget and people can kind of enjoy June, MML convention hits. Um, and I know a couple of other municipalities who do, who do pass theirs in May, so that kind of accelerates the timeline a bit. Um, but I wanted to see what the board thinks, if that's too ambitious, or if we wanted to add a special town meeting the first, second week of, uh, uh, of June, we just have to make sure that the budget is passed twenty days before July first, so it takes effect with enough time um, for us to start using those funds. We know if you have any questions, concerns, comments?
I think it's, I think it's four, I think it's one.
Yeah, I like, give us a little break.
I like the May, and I think we were ready for it. I mean, it was the first time we'd done it, it was the first time doing that book.
Um, so I think sometimes we were meeting and we were already good with it.
So we'll have that meeting the twenty-third of May and then June, because we actually are working, you know? So, um, coming back in July makes sense to me. It's not really a break because we're still.
Well, we'll still, we'll have meetings in June. We just won't be.
Well, I was going to say, does this mean we get a summer break in June if we pass the budget by May?
By charter, we're required, by charter, we're required to have one meeting per month. Last June, we took off the work session and that caused a lot of problems, so I don't think we should do that again.
Well, that, I, part of, part of that was because of, you know, we had flipped the work session versus the town meeting right around the budget session and whatnot. If we're going with this kind of schedule where the, uh, you know, we're planning to have the budget approval by the end of May, you know? I, I'm not saying.
Whether it has to be.
I'm just saying, if we can incentivize ourselves to stay on track by keeping June to a one month or one meeting month.
Could we, Kyle, could we have a work?
So you're saying we're going to do a vacation?
I think, it doesn't specify, it just says one public meeting, John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But you could kind of, the only, you could do almost like a blended special work where you have the presentations of
All our reports.
All the reports, so that's just for the record, but then maybe you're not voting on anything. It's just more discussion items, and then the July town meeting will be, the, yeah, the.
So if we make sure to get everything done, you know, and that we're ready, so it can be a work session rather than a voting, or frankly, some of the really boring municoed stuff that we probably don't need to discuss, like, because municoed is going to have, like, really boring changes for us, I think, yeah? John? We could try and do that. Well, we'll talk about it as we get closer.
You can do that, yes.
Well, don't we always have Tuesday nights available? I mean, we can throw another Tuesday night in. I'm, I'm just saying, because
I think.
I'm just saying, because to, to Commissioner Locke's point, I mean, and I, I think it was Commissioner Locke who mentioned this, but MML at least looks like it'll be that last week of June, so that would be, if we had the two meetings, that would be uh, second week of June, work session, or fourth Tuesday in June, uh, meeting, and then MML kind of back to back to back after we had just gone through a budget session. I'm not trying to run afoul of the charter or anything like that. I'm just saying, if we can incentivize ourselves to get our work done, you know, kind of beforehand, and we are able to have just one meeting in June where we're either wrapping things up, or as we move into the fiscal year, or, you know, put, putting a button on, as you said, some of the, the, the boring stuff of municoed. I think that would be a way to kind of handle that because June is kind of a muddy month, once we're, once we're done with the, with the budget session.
Okay, so we'll.
Summer bonus.
Charter and Kevin. We'll, we'll check, check that with Kevin Charter, et cetera, um, and we'll not publish that it's canceled, so we'll, if we get our work done, then we can be, you know, canceled too.
And I would say, if we do the one meeting, perhaps putting it as the third Tuesday, I'll look this way, the third Tuesday to give time for the, uh, reports to get in. Um, but that one, yeah.
I see what you're saying.
So it's kind of put in the middle of the month. That's, yeah.
Well, yeah, let's see how it goes. And I keep forgetting, John told me to look at this screen. Give me the other one. All right, um, okay, so we'll move on to the conference room agreement, um. So that's you again.
Um, thank you, Mary. So, uh, we're starting out, we're out of COVID, uh, town hall is reopened, fully functional. Um, we're starting to get back into the groove of renting out the meeting space. We already have, um, one group that has rented it monthly, um, for the entire month, or year of, uh, twenty twenty-three, and then we're seeing a lot more, uh, facility rentals. So out of that, we're just looking at what um, we used to do for the meeting rooms and tweaking the agreements and the rules and what's allowed based off of some stuff we've learned. Um, and I can just kind of go through it real quick. One of the things was, uh, on here, we technically had weekend events, had to go through the board for approval on case by case. Um, now that with the new security setup and whatnot, we're able to sign out a key card and compartmentalize town hall security system, so people can come almost by themselves, pick up the key card on Friday, return it on Monday, um, and we have cameras watching everything, so staff's recommending just take that off so we can automatically rent the room out, um, for weekend events, which a lot of people have, and, uh, not bog down the board. And of course, we check the counter, make sure there's, the committee hasn't rented it already, or there's a town event going on Marlboro Day or something like that. So that's the, the first change. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
It makes sense because we're not paying overtime, which is why the board had to approve it.
Exactly, because we had to have a police officer open up the, uh, open up town hall. Um, then another one was, uh, we had no alcohol, so we wanted to change that to no hard alcohol, liquor and whatnot, um, or illicit drugs, so beer and wine is allowed. Um, and we could do with prior approval with board commissioners, um, we could change that. If the board doesn't want to see that every time for an application, could just, you put it at the staff level, like, the town commissioner had to do a special approval or something of it, or notify the board. Um, and then we can't have alcohol being sold on town property. That would take a lot of, uh, liquor license and whatnot, um. Any thoughts on that, those changes from the commissioners?
Do we want to approve beer and wine, or do we want Kyle to do it?
Um, from, I know from my experience, like, my dad did a wedding at a private club and they didn't have one. You had to get your own insurance company for that. So do I want the town to be responsible for that? Um, it depends on what our insurance will cover.
But you know what? Most venues, when you have, uh, beer or wine or even alcohol, like you said, you do have to purchase your own insurance for that, and so that way, if that, if that's the case, then yeah. If we want to leave that in it, then we, they would have to purchase insurance.
Okay, and we also have a whole harmless agreement, so the town's not held harmless for.
But if some, if they're drinking and they, God forbid, get in a car and smash up Vicky's car, then they need to pay for that. I mean, I guess.
I need to hear both sides. I need to hear both sides.
If that's what the consensus is for us to have the beer and wine in the contract, and we are allowing that, then we do need to have that person or that group purchase separate insurance. We'll have to probably, um, find out which kind of insurance and, you know.
And, and that is standard, so I mean, that is, that's what I do. So that's definitely standard. They need to fi- uh, uh, have their own COI. And then also, you need to consider it of, you know, the type of event, because you may need, we may request that they have to have security at that event. So I know it's a small room, but when people get, start drinking, things start happening, so you may want to consider, like, there need to be, like, they need to have maybe, um, you know, a, a person, a security person that is just going to be there to oversee the, you know, and safety and all that.
Would you say we only allow beer and wine?
I want to, I want to piggyback off of that. When I was recently looking at a venue, you know, um, it was with PG, uh, Parks, uh, Parks and Planning, so if you wanted to have an event with any type of alcohol or any kind of beer and wine, you had to have a security, uh, you had to, you had to pay for security to be on site.
And it would probably be our, our, the question is.
But that's what they, that's what the.
They have to pay our officers overtime.
Yeah, well, they had to.
Then we'd have to have office, our officers do it, and it becomes a question of what is our capacity and is this someplace we even want to go?
This is town hall.
Beer and wine, or, or even non- illicit drugs, right? Like, no, 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 uh.
It's not the brewery on the waterfront. I mean, seriously.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, if we do.
Yeah, for me, for a.
You need to produce your own insurance.
Yeah, produce your own insurance, but I also think that either you, we limit it with, of course, like, I don't, no hard alcohol. I think someone mentioned beer and wine. But it just depends on the type, because people do, and I don't think that we should have to, we would use our own security. I think that they should get a security, like, like a police officer that wants, you know, that does.
I'm sorry, we do baby showers, not wedding receptions. Let's just stick to beer and wine.
But beer and wine is what we're talking about. Beer and wine is what we're talking about and needing that. And, and then I guess the question comes to chief.
They need to be insured.
Security officer.
They need to be insured.
So the question comes to chief is, how, you know, how would you want to handle that security end of thing?
They need to be insured and show proof of insurance.
Right, so I've got that down, Tommy.
So it would be, it, it's clearly up to the board. The board can make the decision. It could be one of two ways. The officer could be paid by their salary or overtime to do it, or we could establish a part-time or secondary employment type opportunity where the individuals don't necessarily pay the officer, but they would pay the town, and then the town would just give the revenue to the officers to work that event. Because it's not going to be something that we do every day, every week, like, working at That's a good point. Your local store or your movie theater, so it's not a every week, every type of event, so they would have to say, okay, for an officer to be here for five hours, it would be X amount of dollars. They would have to pay that to the town. That's a good point. You're not a security guard. Give that to the officer to make sure that it's done equally and fairly.
And that's, that's just how it goes, too, because when I, I was, uh, uh, looking at the venue, they, uh, it was for Parks and Planning. They said if you had beer or wine, you had to have an officer present. They had the officer. We, the money that was paid was paid out directly to that officer for that allotted amount of time. So they do benefit from that. The money went directly to the officer, but it went through Parks and Planning. But they said, I think it was like something about, something like two fifty, three hundred dollars for like the four or five hours. It was like a flat rate.
Yeah.
We'll work that part out with chief and add that in to that section. Um.
Next, uh, big changes out in the parking lot. Um, now that we're starting to get more time vehicles and stuff, just, uh, making sure they can be parked in designated parking spots. Um, so like, keep the electric vehicles for the electric vehicles. Um, and whatnot. And then all, uh, reserved spaces remain open, but then highlight that overflow parking is available at the Board of Education parking lot. Um, which is where we want the majority of people to park anyways because our lot ten spaces for.
And if it's wet, people get stuck up in the grass. Darnell had to pull people out. And if it's the weekend, he can't do that.
That's right. I forgot about that. We did have that event and people got stuck in the grass. Any thoughts on those, those additions or?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to Darnell. He doesn't want to pull people out.
The next page.
Sorry, did I miss something? My computer died for a second.
You said we're, they can't park on the grass because we don't need you having to pull them out.
Um, so before we kind of hit the, uh, bright. Go for it. So before we hit the, uh, the discussion on the rates and entities and stuff, I just want to highlight about, um, now that we do have the key card. Um, talking about how they pick up the key cards on that, that's the second page, page fifty-six. That's highlighted. But then, um, just also now going back up to the rate chart, um, we're looking to maybe streamline this private event versus a public community event. Resident and in-town business versus non-resident, non-in-town business. And how much, um, we wanted to charge. Um.
So this kind of comes from like, we've had a lot of community partners say like, hey, can we use the room? But they're like the Boys and Girls Club. Can we use the room for pictures? They can't pay for that and they're a partner with us. They're right here. So I've had to use the thing we removed, which was like, that the mayor can waive. Oh, I guess that's still there. I thought we.
I thought it was something we were supposed to discuss. It sort of highlighted it.
Um, we said that you would make that call. But, but basically like instead of it just being committee, that's what it was. It's now like if Marlboro County HOA wants to use it or if Boys and Girls Club want to use it or if any other like nonprofit is going to use it for a public event and purpose that's free and open to everyone. Um, versus a private event where they're having a birthday party or charging people. That's, that's the distinction. Everyone okay with those? Great.
I mean, have you had any concerns? Um, this commissioner, Duncan, have you had any, um, pushback on the rates previously? Um, Kyle, max five hours.
No, we, uh, we actually haven't advertised the very, or pushed it out. We've gotten, gotten pretty good responses for room rentals. Um. So we, no one scoffed at the price that I'm aware unless, um, Miss Lucy's been taking calls and people hang up when she tells them the price. But, uh, I think it's pretty.
We can ask her.
Yeah, no, I haven't heard complaints on the price. Especially, I know we had a new resident, um, rented for a baby shower the other weekend. They were pretty, they were, the first two hours were free. Um, and they were pretty appreciative of that. And then, so that's another thing for like residents. Cause we're starting to see like how much staff time takes into like tracking the key card. Um, and make their like go out for how many tables and chairs they need, making sure it's clean and how to stuff. That's something, if we offer the first two hours free to residents, do they still get a discounted rate or is it a hundred dollars, like the same?
Still be the same.
I, I, I think that you should think about a setup. I think you should think about a setup time and let that be the free hour. Like they come in, they can set up. And then after that, the event time starts. Like, so that's just the setup time. So they get an hour instead of saying two hours free. I think that's a little bit much, but I would give them a setup hour of the setup be that hour and that's their free hour. And then every, the rest of the time.
That's a compromise.
So Commissioner Duckett, that, that makes sense, but also they need time to clean up.
Yeah, so.
Is that all going to be undoing to that one hour?
Well, they get that. Well, then that's.
We want them to clean up.
Yeah, they have to clean up afterwards. And then yes, there should be a set limit, a set time on how long that is, like an hour. You don't need like two hours to set up. They, and it has to just be hard and fast. Like you get an hour to reset the room, clean up and all that.
They get fined. They get fined if they leave a mess.
Exactly.
Well, that's the deposit.
Yeah, we hold the deposit.
No, you're holding the deposit. Okay.
But I think.
Deposit, yeah.
So I think, sorry, I just want to come back to like this residence and benefits and like residents will say like, what kind of, what kind of benefits do I get as a resident over someone outside? Um, so I think that make, is why it makes sense to give them the free time because they're paying, right? They're paying for Kyle's time. Now they're not paying for, for Darnell or Kyle's time to come like set up tables, but, but it's kind of, you know.
Well, 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 I don't think.
You live in town, you get it cheaper.
I, I just don't think that, yeah, I think either one thing, kind of like what Tommy said, you give a resident fee and then you have everybody else's fee. So I don't think.
Just like every other club.
Yeah, I don't think that you should just say it's free just because it will, it will make people feel like they're actually receiving something. I think that it should be a price. This is yours. But just like they do when you take swim classes, you know, you have the, the county fee and then a outside fee. So that's what we should look at.
So take out the free hours and change it to like seventy-five dollars? So it's more than the.
No, they still get it. They should still get an hour to set up.
I think they should.
Twenty-five in town, seventy-five out of town.
So if you get trying to be detailed with your tables, with your balloons, whatever you're doing, you need that hour so you're not rushing to set up. And I don't think, and most places don't charge you, uh, for setting up.
So to be across.
Across the board, you get an hour to set up.
Whether it's resident, non-resident, hour per set up, and then the residents get the reduced rate. Okay. Cause that's something we've gotten and people are asking for the different times for.
You have to give them the time to set up. And see, in that time, if you know you have to be out at five, then you know your event has to be in, over at so at four o'clock, but it's all, they're paying for that time. You know, they, they got their hour free already.
If they want more set of time, they got to pay another hour.
Yes.
They need more time, period. They have to pay for an additional.
Is seventy-five a good price for residents, do we think? Or should we do less than that?
No, no less.
But what is the outside fee? What is the non-resident fee?
A hundred.
Oh, and then, okay, a hundred. Okay. I think that's fair.
Everybody gets an hour set up time.
Okay, I just want to make one comment. I know the mayor had said that if somebody's charging for people to come in, there should be no events where somebody's renting the room and charging people to come into town hall. That's some type of an event we may not want. If you're charging to come into town.
So if I want to host, I want to have a poker night.
Huh?
That's true, but if I wanted to have a poker night, I mean, I gotta charge people to come in and play the poker.
Well, okay. I mean, poker.
So I guess where I was going with that is, so we have residents who have said, I'd, I'd love to run, I have a business out of my home, but I'd love to run a class.
Right. Like the Candace, uh, young lady, she wants to have some classes. Cause I even thought about, um, and she's a resident.
Joke aside, you're right.
And she charges, she charges, um, about twenty dollars per person.
So, so I guess the question is, is that something we're going to allow in town hall at this rate? Or are we going to send them over to, uh, what's her premier events or, you know, the lady over in Amish Market? That's rented rental space. Do you see what I'm saying, chief?
We want the money.
Well, all, all I'm saying is you got to discuss it because if you, if you open it up, you know, it might be poker, it might be strip poker, it could be something else that we don't want going on. So that's where I'm getting at. So a class, I understand, but somebody wants to have a party and it turns into a strip.
I think, right. I think you should just set a guideline. I mean, I, to your point, chief, I get that. And, and I do agree. I just think there needs to be a guideline. So it just needs to be established in the paperwork.
But won't we know?
Can, these types of events.
We will know.
What can I finish my thought? So these types of events, whether it's a class, whether it's a fundraiser or whatever, if it's innocent and it's not, you know, yes, one of those, I would just say anything that's not, not alcoholic. I mean, if it's not alcoholic, then, I mean, you should do it. If it's gonna incur alcohol, then hey. And they're selling tickets? No.
Let's have, let's have, um, staff kind of work on some guidelines.
Right, but, but we, we're going to know when they make the request, we're gonna, we're gonna have to ask them what they're having. So we'll know. If it's, if it's, if they're talking about a party, you, you gonna, they gonna, they, if it's a baby's party, they're gonna say, well, I'm gonna have a kid's party. You know what I mean?
Well, it should be documented. So it should be documented in the paperwork that's actually listed. If this is going to be listed on our website, it all should be documented. So if they don't have to call and ask their question, could they actually have it? Or would they need security? You know that.
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with Commissioner, I agree with Commissioner Duckett on that. I think if we, if we document it so that there's no way that someone could come back and say, well, you approved this event as opposed to that event. There's just clear guidelines of what are the types of things we're allowing at town hall and what. Cut those questions out.
We were going to push that over to Kyle instead of the president and then also, um, say they reserve the right to, so, so instead of president of the Board of Town Commissioners, it would be town, town administrator.
Well, number thirteen.
Number thirteen. And they reserve the right to deny the plant previously reserved base, reclassify or waive rental fees or make exemptions to regulations.
I would say town administrator reserve the right.
Yeah, that's what we're suggesting. And.
I tried to. Town administrator reserve the right.
And it's also an ethics thing because if I do something wrong, you guys fire me versus if the president or something.
Well, but it also gives me the right to waive fees. So go back to painting the town purple. I could say, oh, I like this resident, so I'm going to waive their fee. That should be a lap.
We could put something in there where if you're charging admission, it has to be a case by case approved.
We'll work that out and bring it, bring it in January and we'll put it, we can put it as a vote. And then if we don't like it, we can table it. That, that way, if it looks good or we have minor changes, we just make them. If it doesn't look good and we have more changes, then we table the vote. Um, that way, that is clearing up our items. If it works, if it doesn't work, we'll just pump it forward. Um, okay, so then we've got an HVAC update coming from Director Bond.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm sure as you all are aware, for the Christmas holiday, the office side of town hall lost heat due to a blow, blower motor failure in a carrier unit located near the building. Uh, once you guys approve the quote, Chapman Services ordered the new motor and it was installed onsite on December. I'm, I'm sorry. We received it on December twenty seventh. The new motor, um, came with a smaller input shaft than the previous model. Uh, so, so a new input shaft was ordered. The input shaft is what is actually spinning the belt that spins the fan that blows the air into the building. Um, so that was received and installed on December twenty ninth and the unit was operational with issues. The unit's interface panel continued to throw alarm codes and shut down the unit, which we believed the space heaters in town hall kept it warmer than the thermostat setting, causing the unit to shut down during the testing. Over the, over the last.
Hold on a second, sorry. Hold, hold on a second. Um, I need another commissioner to turn on their camera because Commissioner Lot has left the meeting. So I don't have a quorum again. Uh, Commissioner Lot, uh, handshake or, um.
Sorry, I'm here. I was here. I would just.
Okay, sorry, sorry. Continue, Darnell. I apologize.
Sorry. Go ahead, Darnell. I was listening. I apologize.
Oh, no problem. Uh, kept it warmer than the thermostat setting, causing the unit to shut down during testing. So over the last few days, well, when this was, uh, actually written, space heaters were off, the building temperature remained stable, uh, which was due to the uh, warmer than, which we now know was due to the warmer than normal temperatures. Um, Chapman Services, uh, came up on the fourth, uh, with their tech to inspect the dampers in the attic to ensure everything was operating as it should. They found no issues with the dampers themselves. All right, um, just a little bit of an update since this was actually, uh,
Yeah.
the, since last week, uh, when this was written, um, we found out that the unit has an addition, an additional issue. It's uh, the tech noticed that, um, one of the sensors on the unit was bad. These, apparently that sensor, um, is where all of the temper, where all of the red temperatures sort of enter into. Um, which is why it's not necessarily regulating the temperature within the building. It's on, it's operational, but it's not operating the adequate temperature. Um, that sensor is on back order from the manufacturer. So at this point, trying to figure out a workaround, figure out if there's any different sensor we can use, figure out if that sensor
Yeah.
built, or, um, is there any way to hardwire and, uh, set, uh, one temperature until that sensor is available. Um, as you guys requested, Chapman Services is also working on a quote for a service agreement. We're also waiting quotes for other service, uh, uh, for other service agreements for, uh, a few other companies. Due to the unique nature of this HVAC system, uh, I've requested site visits before they prepare a quote because we don't want them to think they're working on one thing, see that the system is more complex than
Yeah.
expecting. And then we get charged a different rate than we weren't anticipating.
Do what you gotta do. I trust you.
So, um.
My opinion.
So once we, uh, once we come up with, uh, some sort of workaround to, um, regulate the temperature within the building, um, we, there will be an additional update. Uh, you may receive the date, uh, before one of these meetings. Uh, hopes, hopefully, and we hope to have this resolved soon. So, um, if there's any questions or anything, I'll, we'll take those at this time.
Darnell, I trust your assessment. Um, I don't have to question your assessment. Uh, anybody else have questions?
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Okay, um, so we're going to move on to a administrative update. And I believe chief has something for us. Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was having problems with my computer. Um, I believe it was in November or December, I came to the board about the L P R system for the police cars. And you all approved it. What, uh, actually happened is I reached back out to the state and they actually approved us for another two license plate readers. So uh, I'm bringing this up today at the work session because that would be, uh, we would need an additional thirty thousand dollars approved by the board. So that when we spend the money, the grant that we got would immediately replace the thirty thousand dollars. So uh, we're subject to get another two license plate readers if the board approves the second set.
And we would approve those at the next meeting, right? Not, we don't need to approve them tonight, do we?
No, it will be at the next meeting so that, um, I think the, I believe the first set are scheduled to come in, in the. I think the, I believe the first set are scheduled to come in in the next week or two. So I'm not sure if the, the guy's on vacation. I'm not sure if he's going to try to push the second set through as well, and it just come in as one order. But I believe it'll be two separate, um, invoices, or he may try to push it to one invoice, and then we would spend the money and then we would get the money back. It would be the same document. It just basically has, uh, different dates on it.
Okay.
So chief, basically, this is Commissioner Lot. So basically, we're just giving you the money upfront, and then you will be rever, reimbursing us once you get the, uh, grant.
Correct. The grant is already guaranteed by the state of Maryland. Only thing we have to show is that we actually got the items installed and we paid for it. As soon as the invoice, or as soon as they install it and it's clear, I submit the invoice, they reimburse the money.
Hey, I'm sorry, we lost our quorum again. I, I need another video on. Commissioner Hanchet or Duckett or Lot, are you able to put on a video? So we have a quorum? Thank you.
I am not.
Yes. Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanchet.
Um, what's up? I've been listening, but.
Yeah, just need your video. Okay, so with the video, we're required to have the video on for a forum. The three of us have to.
I'm sorry.
So that's all. Okay.
I apologize.
All right, so we're approving chief to go apply for the grant, and we'll approve the funding at January town meeting. Any objections? Okay. All right, any, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing other than the Water Street Bridge is going in, the pedestrian.
Pedestrian bridge.
And, um, working with the, uh, the sidewalk contractor for the sidewalks on Main Street Water, uh, Darnell and I had a meeting with them today, um, just working through some right-of-way issues, but progress on all fronts.
And I have one thing, which is that I was talking to another mayor today, and they were like, hey, are you going tomorrow to the MML opening reception? I had forgotten about it. I don't know if any of you all have forgotten about it, but I'm going to try to get there in, into Annapolis tomorrow. Um, so I just wanted to remind you guys, since I had also forgotten. So that's my.
Um.
I didn't forget. I didn't forget, uh, um, Sarah, I just, uh, I have a class tomorrow, um, so I can't.
Yeah, they sent an email on Monday and I missed it. Um, so I just happened to be talking to another mayor and they said it. So I will get there. Um.
I did too.
But then I had. Yeah. I hadn't had it on the updates or anything, so I wanted to mention it just because it had slipped my mind. I apologize for that.
Yeah, they sent the, uh, inviting, they sent the invitation.
Yeah, they did. All right, so we'll move on to the agenda for next time. Um, so the, the agenda for the twenty-fourth is going to be Better City Contract Adjustment with the Bl- Branding. Um.
That's going to be important.
Might be wise. I think it might be wise to put the elections ordinance on the agenda so that the public has a chance to comment on it, even though we might not be ready. Does that sound fair?
I agree.
From a staff.
I agree.
It'd be a, a rough draft to go, and the board doesn't have to necessarily introduce it. Um, John can hop in there too, but maybe we can just put on the agenda, the draft.
As a discussion.
As a discussion item.
And we don't have to discuss it, just give people three minutes to comment on it.
That's a good idea.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Um. And then the event calendar vote, the budget calendar vote, the conference room agreement, hopefully a vote, if not a tabling, um, license plate reader vote, and I'm going to tentatively put HVAC on there, which is maybe going to be a discussion if Director Bond comes back with more information that he wants to share beyond just putting it in his report and have a discussion. Um, is that sound, does that sound okay to everyone?
Sorry.
Yeah, good idea. Can I, can I rehash that? Just, just, um, so it's Better City branding, the budget calendar, um, conference, uh, space vote, and then the license plate reader. Did I get everything?
Um, we'll have the event calendar. We're also gonna just, we're gonna stick the election ordinance draft on there so that the public has a chance to comment on it, even though it's not ready. Like, just try, just trying to give the public more time to comment.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Um, we're gonna put HVAC on the agenda, but we will take it off if Director Bond doesn't need it, but we'll leave it on there for now in case he needs that, needs some time to talk about that with us. Is everyone okay with that potentially coming off, going on now and potentially coming off before?
Yes.
One, two, three.
Yeah.
Seven.
Um, okay, so now we're ready to adjourn. Uh, I, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting at nine eighteen?
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, John, you're on.
Yep, President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Duckett.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanchet.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
All right, good night, everyone.
Night, guys.
Good night, thank you.
I just think.
Yeah.